Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hubley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good evening and welcome to the October 22nd city council meeting. We have a pretty full agenda, so we're gonna get started. But we're gonna begin as we always do, each of our proceedings, and that is by asking God's blessing on our work here. So I'm gonna ask Reverend Charles Hayes from Edgewood Assembly of God to please come to the podium. Welcome, sir. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for the privilege. Let us bow our heads and a word of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, your wise and your loving God, thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here this evening. Thank you for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the great honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us. And once again tonight, we read in your scriptures where you said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. First of all, we pray for our mayor. We pray for the various levels of city officials. We pray for this council that has assembled this evening. Father, tonight we pray that you would grant them wisdom, a sense of welfare. We pray, Father, that you will give them a king thirst for justice, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, and for personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. And tonight we pray for the agenda that has been set before them. We pray, Father, that you would be with them, help them and guide them as we work and live in our beloved city, Columbus, Georgia. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. And please thank your congregation for sharing you with us this evening. All right, next we'll have our pledge of allegiance and it'll be offered up by the Columbus Figure Skating Company. Welcome. You'll get them the microphone? Sandra, can we get them a microphone?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. You would. Tell us, give us your name and your age and maybe where you go to school. And then tell us a little bit about the Columbus Figure Skating Company.
I'm Ashley Fields and I'm 13 and I go to Harris County Harbor Middle School and I've been skating for about five years. And I don't know, I just love skating.
Awesome. How about you, young man?
My name is Hunter Hathaway. I've been skating for two and a half years. I'm nine years old and I go to Brookstone School.
Awesome. So do you guys compete here in town or do you travel?
Yes.
I should've said, "And do you travel?"
Okay, so we do compete. We're having our first competition here coming up in May. We just got back from regionals and...
I got first place in the jump challenge and second place in the program.
Wow.
Unfortunately, I didn't do my best and I didn't place. But I placed last year, so it's okay.
That's good. Gives you...
It's okay.
Motivation for next year. Motivation for next year. We're awful proud of both of you. And we thank you for being here for the pledge and we thank you for what you're doing to put Columbus on the map with your figure skating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all give him one more hand. And get Mox and the parents standing. If we can get the parents to stand up as well, let's recognize them. Did you want to say anything about the...
Yeah, sure. My name's Robbie Popiriski. I'm actually the director of the Columbus Figure Skating Academy and a retired pro figure skater that moved here from San Jose, California, after winning my national medal and being at the Olympic trials. And these are my students. And when I first came here, we were only about 30 skaters. And so far, we've touched about 575 kids and competitors in this area. So we're expanding a lot. We're having our Christmas show this year and all you guys are invited to come along as well. We usually get like, last year I think we got like 225 people in the stands for a small place like where we are. And I'm looking forward to see how it expands. And we actually, we had three competitors this year that went off to regionals. One of them's actually a coach and she's working at 16-years-old, being a coach and also helps influence these guys to be competitors. And she's a competitor and she's also trying to see if she can make more people be competitors as well. She would be here, but unfortunately she has to work. So I came in to try to talk to all you guys. And I just thank you for the opportunity to let them do something that a lot of kids can't get to do. And I enjoy giving them the opportunity of being with a nationally ranked skater. So thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you for pouring into these young people and helping them refine their talents. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give them one more hand, please. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, before you go, will the competition that she mentioned, will that be here at our ice rink?
It will. It will be at the Columbus Ice Rink, right next to the city manager. So if you guys want to come to watch on competitions...
On the competitions, usually it's open to anyone to come in and watch competitors. It will be from the morning to about late afternoon. So usually about nine in the morning to 12:00. But if anyone in the city wants to come and see these competitors from, not just from here, but we're gonna have people from Birmingham, Montgomery, people in Atlanta and North Carolina, like my skaters who went all across the states for opportunities. If you guys want to see more people coming in, we're definitely glad to let you guys see it too in May. Or if you want to come to the Christmas show, we're looking forward to that, too.
Is there a website where this information can be found?
Yeah. Majority of our stuff is now on Facebook, but we do have a website, columbusfigureskating.com. You can write us at info@columbusfigureskating.com as well. As well, you can find us on Instagram and Facebook for the Columbus Figure Skating Academy online, too. And we messenger, talk to people and just get connected. And we've done all the parades around here, too.
Fantastic. Well, thank you again for what you do.
Thank you so much. And any questions, just please ask me. If you ever see me on the streets, I'll be glad to answer. If you see these guys or you come to our ice rink, we're always happy to just bring you guys in.
The date?
The Christmas show is December 8th and the competition should be May 5th.
All right, well, good.
Thank you so much. You guys have a great one.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Next, the minutes from the October 8th council meeting are September 24th. All right, we've got a motion second to approve any discussion regarding the minutes. If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, they are approved. We've got a sort of a special presentation. It's a dedication of a stamp, kind of an unusual occurrence, but it's for Veterans Day. And I'm gonna ask Ms. Pamela S. McClary to come to the podium and I'm gonna turn it over to her for a few moments.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
My name is Pamela Senior McClary and I'm with the United States Postal Service. This is my boss, the postmaster, the acting postmaster, Victor Abando. We're here today with great pride that the United States Postal Service presented this special publication containing more than 100 stamped images commemorating back to World War II. To further honor those who fought for our freedom in that war. The event of that global conflict touched almost everyone and its echo have helped shape today's world. America's sons and daughters fought around the globe to defeat and preserve the liberty. It was a struggle of epic proportions and has required the greatest of individual and national sacrifices. To help you capture the sense of this global conflict, we are presenting these stamped images that we do all the time that you see and use for the postal envelopes there. They're descriptions in the order that events occurred. Some of our stamps honor those in the military who participated in the war. Others of our stamps honor those despite significant events such as Pearl Harbor, D-Day. Still others recall the efforts of civilians on the home front. Collectively, these images are served one purpose, to honor the people who stood against oppression, fought for freedom and made the ultimate sacrifice for the cause of freedom and human rights. The United States Postal Service has helped to bind these nations together for more than two centuries in times of war and in times of peace. We are involved to serve in ever-growing nations more effectively than ever. We continue that transformation today. But as we move forward, let us never forget those who have gave so much to so many during the great conflict of many years ago. Today, the United States Postal Office would like to honor one of those people that does a lot in the community here in Columbus, Georgia. And further ado, we're gonna have Mayor Henderson take it from here.
Yes, and this is really fun because I enjoy surprises. So it is a great pleasure and just incredible honor that I read a little bit about Jerry Pops Barnes. He was born in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, raised by his grandmother Mary J. White in the city of brotherly love. There were many life lessons for him and his siblings as it relates to showing of concern for the well-being of others. Reaching out a hand to someone in need and treating everyone as they want to be treated. As a strong-willed African-American woman, his grandmother instilled attributes such as honesty, hard work, integrity and compassion for others. With this foundation, his teachings became his motivation to make a difference. The determination, this determination is attributable to his educational accomplishments. Pops Barnes has earned an AAS degree in journalism from Philadelphia Community College, BA degree in history from the University of Pennsylvania and a BSN degree in nursing from Columbus State University. As a young man, Pops Barnes enlisted in the United States Army, served his country and the citizens of this great nation. After 20 years of service, Pops Barnes retired from the United States Army at the rank of E8 Master Sergeant. On any given day, Pops would share his experience in the military and the traits of duty and responsibility in serving our country. He believes in the structure that is maintained in the military and the organized skills that are developed through specialized training. As a community activist, he remains connected to health education by offering free community health nursing on a regular basis in homes, recreation centers and churches. Pops is also involved with various organizations specifically designed to address the needs of military personnel and veterans to include the American Legion, the Disabled American Veterans and American Military Society. After being elected as a member of council for District 1, Pops Barnes organized the Veterans Day Parade for the city of Columbus that has now become an annual tradition. He went above and beyond to have live streaming for those veterans who would not be able to attend the parade. Pops continues to maintain a vital role in continuing this celebration of patriotism and to honor the many men and women who have sacrificed to serve in the armed forces during times of war and peace and who have fought for the liberties we enjoy today. It is with great honor and respect that the United States Postal Service bestows this special recognition of the Purple Heart dedication to you, Counselor Jerry Pops Barnes. Thank you for your service and all that you do for the veterans and the community.
Wow.
I can't tell you how unusual it is and what a joy it is to see him speechless.
Hit your light.
This took me, this hit me. I'm breathless. And look at who's here.
Bruce, turn them on. Thank you.
I'm just shocked and I'm just deeply appreciative, deeply appreciative for the postal service for this year. It's a shame. I am speechless, I'll be honest with you because you know what we had talked about? And this is something altogether different from what we were supposed to address. And so Skip, now I was with him Sunday. So I deeply appreciate this here. This is a, it's an honor. It's a deep honor and deeply appreciative. I can't believe you, all we were talking about was the others, the stamps and everything else to receive this. I'm just humble. Deeply humbled and deeply appreciative and speechless. I don't know what to say. I'm just caught up right now in emotion.
Introduce your family.
This is my daughter Carla and my son-in-law Jeff. There's Janie back there and that's, I can't see you, the Red Itz. Nate, that he's Philadelphia Police Department, my son-in-law. And is that Savannah? It's Ava that's sitting next to my great-granddaughter Ava and that's Savannah. Which one is that?
That's Aiden.
Hold it down. That's Aiden. That's my, one of the few males in the family. It's Aiden. And they got his hair long. I don't know when they're gonna cut it, but they got his hair long. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, this is a surprise. How many people, y'all knew about this? Did you know about it? You didn't know about it. You knew about it, I know. We were talking about doing something altogether different to honor the service dogs. And we had planned this for months. And so I'm sitting up here until he started reading and it just knocked the wind out of me. I'll be honest with you, it just knocked the wind out of me. So I just want to say thank you so very much. I'm deeply appreciative. Thank you so very much. And I don't know what to say. I'm speechless.
Sir, did you want to introduce yourself? And, okay, well, listen, thank you for what you do with the U.S. Postal Service and thank you for honoring somebody who in this community, and this community is very, very invested in and closely connected with our veterans and our military active duty and our veterans. And I, not that anybody asked, but I think you've made a wise decision in recognizing Pops Barnes for all he's done to advance the issues of the veterans. So thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, sir.
And by the way, my wife, did your mother know about this here? And I'm brushing because she had a procedure today because she's been ill. And I'm shocked that she kept this from me. I am flabbergasted.
I want to know where I go to buy one of those Pops stamps, though. I want that on the next letter I send. Well, thank y'all again for recognizing Counselor Barnes. And Counselor Barnes, congratulations, sir. All right, we will move on to the city manager's, no, I'm sorry, city attorney's agenda. Got me flustered, too. Mr. Fay?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Barnes, we also knew about that, but it was attorney calling out, we couldn't talk about it. We got several items to vote on that should not be too hard to get through. The first one is 3025, 3021 Macon Road, a small man petition for general commercial is ready for adoption.
Move through.
All right, it's motion second. Any discussion to the motion? All right, Bruce, please bring it up. And counselors, please register your votes. That's approved.
Okay, the next one is 8501 Fortson Road, single-family, Allen Development Group petition, ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Please cue it. Counselors, you can register your votes when it appears on screen.
Passed. Next one up is 12020th Street, multifamily, Verona Campbell Housing Authority petition. Ready for adoption.
Motion and a second to...
Just second, Mayor.
Oh, we've got somebody missing? Who'd we miss?
We got it now.
We got it. Okay. All right, there is a motion second on item 3. Are there any, is there any discussion? If not, please register your votes. There we go. All right, that's approved. We are on the next one.
Okay, number four, this is no parking zone, Garrett Road and Chatsworth, ready for adoption.
Counselor Allen?
Ms. City Attorney, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 4 through 9, I believe it is, which are all the no parking issues. Is it?
We don't have a problem with that, but does the clerk, I know he can't cue it up like that, but is that all right with the clerk?
Yes, she indicated it. So we've got a motion to approve 6 through 9 and a second from, I think, Counselor...
This would be 4 through 9.
4 through 9, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. 4 through 9, I apologize. Any of those that anybody wants to pull or have any other discussion? If not, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, each of those has passed. The items 4 through 9. Next item is the uptown parking change, First Avenue going from two hours to four hours between 11th and 12th Street, ready for adoption.
Counselor Thomas?
I would request, I'm going to vote to support this, but I would request that the city manager's office monitor this. I'm still a little concerned that of that entire First Avenue, there's only one block that, and the blocks on either side are two-hour parking. So would you just monitor it to make sure that it's working and if we need to somewhere down the line, either change the others or change that one, do something? Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Did we get a vote on it?
I don't think we got a, we didn't have a motion yet. Motion and second approved. Any further discussion? If you, please register your votes, counselors. Need a couple more? There we go, that passes.
All right, item 11 is the demolition of the 10 structures that we discussed and looked at last week that don't make code and that's ready for action.
Motion and second to approve. Any discussion? Please cue it. Register your votes.
All right, next item would repeal ordinance number 1647 to reinstate the procurement ordinance provisions that allow expenditures between $10,000 and $24,999 without council approval. This is up for discussion. Any questions on that?
Yes, Counselor Crabbe?
I was wondering if we could make an amendment to this to possibly maybe for first responder use only or a caveat that, you know, everything stays at $10,000 except $24,999 for emergency-type expenditures, first responder and things like that.
Deputy City Manager, you have some comments?
Just wanted to comment on that. I went and pulled all of the items for this fiscal year, which there's been 58 items on the purchasing agenda. 13 of them have been between the $10,000 and the $25,000 limit. And I can say that all of them are either software-related, so some of them from IT, annual ambulance license fees, state mandated workers' comp fees was another item. And the others were repair of heavy equipment or public safety equipment, excavator, tub grinder, ambulance, fire truck. There was bus repair, but those were the items, the 13 items that have been brought to council between that dollar limit for this fiscal year. So they are definitely operational items and what it does is it delays the repairs of those vehicles and then the payment to the vendors for that dollar range. So it is just an operational efficiency.
Anything that is spent, obviously, is budgeted and has been approved in the budget unless it's some type of emergency situation or repair or an IT issue that we've got to get something back up and running very quickly. So I understand the desire to make sure they are emergencies, but there's such a fairly narrow list of items that would be included in this. And I know in the past, it had been $25,000. And I actually caught this the last meeting when I saw two emergency vehicles that were delayed getting back in action by an additional two weeks. And anything else, though, would have to come to council if it was outside the budgeted items. Counsel, is that all?
Yeah, that's it.
Counselor Thomas?
The city manager's authority to make emergency purchases and so forth, does that have a dollar limit on it?
No, it does not. Emergency purchase would go through and then there'd be notification to council on emergency purchases.
So if, for example, there was a software issue that cost $13,000 and it was an emergency, the city manager could authorize that even with the current ordinance? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. But these items that I read off were not emergency purchases. It was annual license renewals that would come to council.
Well, annual license renewals, quite frankly, I'm not inclined to take that away because you ought to know that. And you ought to be able to figure that out and bring it to us in plenty of time to get the money to them by the time, by the deadline for the fee to be paid. The fact that we have a fire truck sitting in a yard somewhere waiting to be fixed until we can get to this, that is of a concern to me. So I'm not sure exactly what the solution is, but...
Well, and we had talked about, simply because we don't want council to be surprised, the last year we've had around one a month, that we could administratively make sure that there's notification, maybe a list or some kind of email that goes out just so that if a vendor were to ask a counselor about it, that you would have the same notification on it that the mayor does.
And again, it seems to me that if there are yearly expenses that come up every year and every September you have to pay your annual fee for whatever, you ought to be able to figure that out before September and get it approved, no matter what the dollar limit is.
And I'm not sure what was involved with the license fee. It was one of those expenditures, I think.
Yes, we had an annual ambulance license fee and obviously we know ahead of time and those come to council. The ones that is repair of excavator, the repair of a tub grinder, repair of bus repairs, ambulance, fire truck, those kind of things are operational, more operational efficiency issues.
So all of these were brought to council. So I think that's why the license, the ambulance license was listed. That would have been obviously brought well in advance, so...
Counselor Allen?
It seems to me that if we have vehicles that are important enough to our daily operations that are sitting there waiting to be repaired because of an amount that hasn't been approved by council, to me, that almost seems like... by council, to me, that almost seems like it could be deemed an emergency expenditure. If, I mean, council would have to agree to something like that, but...
Well, I mean, it's up to the pleasure of council. I just think that if this, the authority was rolled back to ten thousand, and we have encountered a few that, that I think it makes sense to go back to the twenty-five thousand as long as there's some communication so that council understands where the money's going.
Yeah, I don't have a problem moving it to twenty, back up to twenty-four. You asking for twenty-four ninety-nine, nine ninety-nine? Is that...
Yeah, it's anything under twenty-five thousand.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. But it just seems like public safety vehicles, fire department, CPD, whatever it is, should, to me, should be deemed emergency and move on, move on, get them back on the road.
All right. Counselor Crabbe?
Oh, I've forgotten that I put it back on. I just wanted, I just wanted a little bit further clarification. So out of these thirteen items that you listed, how many of them were repairs to vehicles?
Five of them.
Okay, so we had five repairs to vehicles, and those were operational vehicles. They were deemed operational vehicles, but you could see that as an emergency situation because we had to get them back on, and then they would fall under the emergency expenditure, correct?
They could be if it, if the department head makes a request that we need, this is an emergency purchase, we need to move forward right away. Typically, repair of vehicles has not normally fallen under that process, but we can look at that.
Okay. I still, I still would like it just to be for, it seems like it already, we have already got it covered under the policy of emergency situations.
And I think, I think that the idea is that when it's, when you call them emergency, that's a subjective, I mean, and it puts the city manager in a tough spot because if he brings something, says it's a, it was an emergency, and one counselor thinks, well, that, I don't think that's an emergency, that's a bus, and we have other buses. So I, I just think, I just think it kind of impedes the normal activity of business of the government, and you can tell there's only been thirteen, and two of those would have been brought in advance anyway because they're licenses.
But I guess, I guess my concern is there's only been thirteen because it's ten thousand dollars. So if we give them twenty-four nine ninety-nine, is it gonna...
No, I think what, I think what the deputy city manager's saying is that if there's been thirteen that fell between that, that amount, those weren't things that were just waiting, those were just the expenditures. So it doesn't, doesn't happen often, but when it does happen, if the city manager doesn't have that authority, it just slows down the process of trying to get things, get business transacted, so...
All right.
Any other questions? We'll leave it, leave it on the table for a second reading in two weeks. And then I understand they're looking at other provisions of the procurement ordinance anyway, and that's something y'all can study. All right.
And I, I think thirteen, I think thirteen has been asked to be tabled.
Right. One of the counselors may want to move to delay this.
Okay. Motion, motion second to delay item thirteen. Any discussion? All right, well, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
All right, that'll come back whenever the council has a consensus on that. Next item, Mayor, is an add-on resolution. It's been passed around the table. It would rescind resolution number four 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 ninety-four and authorize removal of two flag poles at Linwood Cemetery, and it is ready for discussion or action.
Move adoption.
Motion second to adopt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I carry.
And just, yeah, and I just was going to make mention that that vote, the council's
rescinded a ninety-four resolution which allowed privately funded flag poles to be placed at two locations in Linwood near burial sites of Confederate soldiers. However, the current Columbus Council deems the flying of the Confederate battle flag offensive to a large segment of our community, and as a result, it'll no longer be flown in Linwood. Both the previous mayor and I have attempted to work with the, the Sons of the Confederate Veterans, owner of the two poles, and proposed other flags to accommodate their interest. The property of the Sons of Confederate Veterans will be treated with respect and be removed in a manner so as not to damage it or adjacent grave sites. This property will be available for pickup by that organization at the main office of the Department of Public Works.
Okay. Then, Mayor, the only other business item is we need a short executive session on potential litigation, but that's all we have tonight.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the public agenda. Is Mr. Jackson Turner here regarding police pay? Okay. How about Mr. Bruce K. Brooks, representing Telecom Audit Group? All right. We'll move on to the deputy city manager.
The first item on the city manager's agenda is an add-on for the legislative agenda for hospice administrators, and I'll allow Counselor Barnes, this is his request, to go through that particular item.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes. Yes. When hospices began, obviously, it was an emphasis for individuals who knew a lot about health care. In time, the requirements for a CEO to be more versed in administrative, human resource, and finances. This stipulation is making it increasingly difficult to, to have individuals apply for hospice positions as a CEO because of the requirement for health care. Now, it's more beneficial for hospice for individuals have administrative and financial experience. And so I've been a member of Columbus Hospice for a number of years, and we did a search, and this extremely hampered our search for a CEO. And so I canvassed around the other hospices, and they have the same, they're hampered by the same specificity. Normally, what happens is that you'll get an administrator, but then you will have a COO now who will be a nurse practitioner, PA, or RN that would handle, be more versed in health matters. And so in order to facilitate the search for a CEO, we need to have this constraint lifted.
Very good. Are there any questions? All right. We'll entertain a motion, I guess, to add this to our legislative agenda. Motion and a second to add it. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
The second item on the city manager's agenda is Levy Road closure and abandonment. The original request came to council in 2018, and that was for a cul-de-sac and to work with the developer at the time. This is at the Gus's Drive-In off of Victory Drive in Levy Road. We updated council July of 2019 that there was not enough room for a cul-de-sac. The property owner is trying to sell the property, and we are requesting to close Levy Road, which by title work is on private property, and to allow for the property owner to have clear title and the ability to sell his property. So we would quit claim that portion that the road sits on and allow him to move forward with his sale.
Counselor Crabbe? Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Bruce, you want to cue it? Counselors, please register your votes. All right, and that's approved.
Item three is a grant from the Georgia Trauma Commission for the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. The grant is for equipment that will enhance the treatment of trauma patients, and there's no matching funds required for this grant.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Hart, where will this equipment be housed?
This will be with the Fire and EMS Department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion second. Any further discussion? We could cue it. Please register your votes. Passes.
And for purchases, these are the items that were approved in the budget, the remaining items approved in the FY twenty budget related to leases. Item A and B is the lease of seventy-two Dodge Chargers, and item B is the lease, the GMA lease to go with that.
Motion second to approve the seventy-two Dodge Chargers and the lease. Any discussion? Please cue that, please. Counselors, you can vote.
I'd like to offer approval for B through A.
Okay, there's, there's a few more on the, on the back. Okay. Motion second to approve C through N. Any, any one that anybody want pulled or any discussion? All right. If you would, please cue it. Counselors, you can vote. It's what now? B through N. Okay, I thought we already did B with A on the lease. I think we did, the intention I thought was A and B together, but we can include B now to make sure that it's, we'll do that. This vote was for B through N. All right, and it is approved. Counselor Davis?
Mayor, I just wanted to say I'm really proud here to see this. Council just approved one of the largest purchases of infrastructure that I've ever seen dealing with public safety. There's a lot of new vehicles that's going out on the streets, fully equipped patrol cruisers for our public safety, and I think this is a phenomenal thing. I've never seen this many vehicles come through this council and request for purchase.
Well, I give credit to council because they, they listened to the needs of public safety and did a very good job in addressing some of those capital needs, so I congratulate all of the counselors. Thank you, sir. All right. I think that's it.
That concludes the city manager's agenda. Just two reminders, the Hometown Connection will be on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, at eleven thirty, and also the First Capital Projects Public Meeting will be held in this building on the twenty-fourth at six P.M.
Very good. Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask for an affirmative vote if you could add me to the list for the purchases, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Clerk's agenda, Madam Clerk, and welcome back, Lindsey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, the first two items are resolutions changing meeting dates. The first, changing November fifth proclamation session to a regular council meeting and counseling the November twenty-six regular council meeting.
Motion and a second for both resolutions, one and two. Any discussion about them? All right, if you cue it. Can you cue that? Nope, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And if you would, Madam Clerk, if you would read item two, just so that the public knows about the change in the meetings?
Yes, and item number two, that's changing the December third, two thousand nineteen proclamation session to a regular council meeting, and that's to be held at five thirty P.M. And to counsel the December twenty-fourth, which is Christmas Eve, to counsel that regular council meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Item number three is the Finance Report Resolution.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas?
Before we leave the day, typically, in a month with five Tuesdays, we would have a work session, and December does have five Tuesdays. Are we, are we going to meet New Year's Eve?
Shoot, yeah. No, no, I'm just kidding.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, please, then, if we can amend that resolution to include council, counseling the December thirty-first?
Motion and a second to add to number two, that we'll also counsel the meeting on the thirty-first. Yeah, it didn't take long. All right, well, all those in favor of, was there a motion and a second? There was a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding December thirty-first to the cancellation, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, good. Thank you, Counselor Thomas.
Thank you, Counselor Thomas. Item number three is the Finance Report Resolution. It's a resolution receiving the Director of Finance report on various alcoholic beverage licenses for the month of September.
Motion approved number three? Motion second. Any discussion? Cue it. We don't have any of them cue. What are you doing over there? No, just kidding. All those in favor, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes. Sorry, Bruce.
Item number four is honorary designation application submitted by Larry and Donna Hawkins for honorary designation to place a memorial bench along the walking trail of Heath Park to memorialize their late son. This item will be forwarded, Mr. Mayor, to the Board of Honor.
Board of Honor. Motion second that it be forwarded to the Board of Honor. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It'll be forwarded. Motion second, receive the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have board appointments. Mr. Mayor, the first are the, is the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners. We have Lauren Becker and Donna Hicks, both are interested in serving another term of office, and we also have Paul Pierce, and he's not eligible to seat himself. He serves in the restaurant retail trade.
Okay, I'll go ahead and renominate Ms. Becker and Ms. Hicks, and I will bring you a nominee for Mr. Pierce's seat.
Since these are the mayor's appointments.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Hicks and Ms. Becker. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're confirmed.
Next, we have the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees, the seat of Charles Staples. This is the Business Community Representative.
I'll, I'll bring that along with Mr. Pierce's next meeting.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Next is the Council District Seat Appointment. This is Public Safety Advisory Commission. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. We have the Board of Tax Assessors, the seat of Mr. Daniel Hill. He's interested in serving another term. Counselor Barnes is renominating him, and Counselor Crabbe is nominating Trey Carmack for this same seat, and we will bring this back for the next meeting. Next, we have a Board of Elections. We have the seat of Margaret Jenkins, Eleanor White, and Diane Scrippsshire. All are interested in serving another term of office. Counselor House is renominating all three. Counselor Garrett is nominating Christopher V. Holmes for the seat of Margaret Jenkins on this board.
Counselor Garrett?
Counselor Barnes is...
Chair, some comment?
I just wanted to let everyone know on council, I don't have any problem with anyone who's on the board right now, but I'm not sure if you are aware, there are no term limits. That's very concerning to me for a non-elected board who influences our elections, and there's also no one under sixty. There's no one representing my age group in the community or anyone, you know, even in their forties or fifties. And Mr. Holmes is young. He, he's very civic-minded, goes to the on-table discussions, is very aware, he's not, and he's not even in my political party, so it's not like this is a partisan nomination. It's just because he's a good guy, he, he's a good issue person, and I think it's very important to us. I mean, it's not, it's not a matter of somebody's doing anything wrong, but when it's not an elected position, I don't think we should just renominate people in perpetuity. I think that's a very dangerous precedent to set, so I hope you will consider, you know, you can ask me any questions about Mr. Holmes or any other nominees, but I just hope you'll consider, you know, that we do need some fresh blood, we need representation of this community, and that's why I've put somebody up, but it doesn't have anything to do with anyone who's currently on the board.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to... Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say I welcome the nominations. What, what I would like to do as a counselor is maybe meet with Mr. Holmes or anybody else that's nominated, just to have a chance to get to know him. To me, this is a very important board. Most of our, all of our boards are important, but this one in particular requires an understanding of the political process and what can happen, as we've seen around the country, particularly in, I think, Broward County, Florida. We need to have people that understand the process and can work to make Columbus a safe voting place and give everybody the right to express their, their voice. So I would just like to have an opportunity to meet with whoever it is. So if we could have some time, flexibility, and before we bring this to a vote, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, please continue.
And Counselor Barnes is nominating Mr. James Washington Jr. for the seat of Eleanor White. And in response to the comments made by Counselor Allen, we will list this for the November 12 agenda.
Okay.
Next, the Personnel Review Board. We have Dr. Michael Forte, Charles Harp, Willie Butler. All are interested in serving another term and are eligible to succeed themselves.
Do you need to make up a nomination for both? I mean, I agree.
Thank you.
My Forte, Charles Harp.
Okay, thank you. We also have Mr. Charles Little Jr. He is not eligible to succeed himself. For the Recreation Advisory Board, for the District Five appointment, we have Sharice Malone. She is eligible to serve another term of office. Counselor Crabbe, this is your nomination. We also have Michael Peacock. This is District Six appointment. Counselor Allen, this is your appointment. For the Region Six Regional Advisory Council, we have the seat of Edward Barnwell. This one is open for nomination. For the Tree Board, we have Kirsten Youngwiss, Catherine Trotter. Both are eligible to serve another term of office and are interested in serving. And we also have Willie Consaletti. He's not eligible to serve another term. We have Brad Huff and Candace Wayman. Those seats are open for nomination. Counselor House is renominating Kirsten...
Kirsten Youngwiss and Catherine Trotter.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor House, Counselor Huff, I'm sorry. And that's all we have. Mr. Mayor?
All right, good. Just a couple of quick things. I know today there's a lot of on-the-table participation, and I mean, that's always an exciting day in Columbus, Georgia. Our residents are joining in open and very frank discussions on a number of issues, and, and it always yields really, really good information. Also, wanted to welcome Valerie Thompson, who will be taking over from Mayor Pro Tem beginning in November. We welcome her to the, to the chambers. And also wanted to make mention one more time, Captain Gene Hall was laid to rest today, and he was a tremendous public servant and public safety officer, and his legacy will continue because he was a training officer. And all of those firemen and women that were in attendance today, they learned from Captain Hall, and the, the next wave will learn from them, the next wave from that wave, and it will make sure that his legacy endures throughout this county for a very, very long time. We did have a request to go into an executive session. I need a motion and...
Potential litigation.
Motion and a second for potential litigation. Any discussion? All right, and Ms. Thompson, if you want to stay for the executive session, I think that would be appropriate. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. All right, we are back in regular session. We were in executive session to discuss litigation. No votes were taken. Motion to adjourn, I hear second.
Second.
Any all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.